It was provided, no action taken. Thank you.
And with that, I will close the closed session meeting. It is 7:15 PM and I'm going to call to order the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. And please note that all council members are still here. At this time, I would entertain any public comments in the purview of the successor agency. There will be another opportunity for a public comment in just a moment for the regular city council meeting. I understand there is something that many neighbors would like to discuss. I would encourage you to hold that for the regular city council meeting. But if there's anyone who'd like to speak regarding items in the purview of the successor agency, please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we will move on. There are no special orders of the day. Do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I want to pull ID 2016-012.
Is there anything else anyone would like to pull?
I'll pull 02016-011.
And 011.
Move the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And coming back to 011, Nora, I believe this is the one that you pulled.
Yeah, these are very big numbers on this particular contract. And I'd like to know whether or not it's appropriate, given the fact that these are big numbers, these are very important projects, but this has been kind of steamrolling along. Is it time to get a second opinion on the validity of these costs?
I believe that with the ROPS and the way the structure is set up, we're bound to use the contract we have already entered into. This is really a question for the city attorney here, but my understanding is with the ROPS, these are obligations that we already have. And so...
I understand that obligation, Maurice, but even though we continue with this, is it time to get a second opinion to look at the validity of the figures? Just because we still continue in the contract doesn't mean we don't have the ability to take a harder look at the figure.
I think a big chunk of these costs are soft costs. They're not actual remediation costs, my understanding. And if the consultant, if EKI could step up to the microphone to kind of talk about these costs, but the project for the corporation yard includes construction costs as well as the soft costs to get through the regulatory hurdles, if you want to respond to that?
Sure. Good evening. Hi, Councilman Davis.
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, I'll try.
Thank you.
In regards to the costs, there are consulting costs. I'm Earl James with Earler &amp; Kalnowski. We've been working with the City of Emeryville for close to 20 years now on these various remediation projects. We have, at various times, had our costs, you know, hourly costs and those kind of things, examined, both in the context of litigation, which you may recall. I personally have sat through many hours of depositions, going through our costs line by line. We're proceeding with this project in a similar way. And there are two aspects to the project. One is the EKI consulting costs, which we, you know, bill basically by the hour. And then there are construction costs related to equipment that we have to buy, related to excavation work that needs to be done to remove contaminated soils from around the edges of the building as part of the project to construct the corp yard facilities there. And for those aspects of it, we will get bids. We'll get three bids and have competitive pricing for those subcontracting aspects of what we're doing. Beyond that, the process that we're working through is the remedial investigation feasibility study remedial action plan process through the Department of Toxic Substances Control. As part of that, we produce cost estimates for the work, including our time, that are part of the DTSC review. Now, they don't, you know, offer a second opinion necessarily, but part of the process of selecting the cleanup remedy has to do with an examination of costs for various approaches that are taken in the cleanup. Does that help?
Well, it helps somewhat, but I look at it, we've had a long history here, 20 years with your firm, and you have done really good work for this city. We appreciate it and it's moved us a long way. But after 20 years, things get maybe a little too comfortable. And I would like to suggest to the other members of the council that we may at least take a look at having a second look at how hard these figures are and whether we can't shave them down a little bit to be more acceptable to the city. So that's my concern here. I know we have to move ahead. The other thing that concerns me, and this is not your problem, Earl, but it's our problem, Maurice, and this is DTSC is continuing to add new requirements, new restrictions, et cetera. We've got to get a handle on that. We've got to sit down with DTSC and come to some kind of an understanding. They have been dragging this site out for too many years, have held us up, and as you can tell, I'm not a happy camper. So would I have the support of the council in at least examining a second opinion on this?
You want to say something?
Just a quick comment. I'm curious, Earl, what percentage of the 20, the corporation yard project, how much of that is your estimate for the construction costs and how much of it is an increase in your services to get us through to that construction? Do you have an idea?
Um...
Because you estimated what the construction would be based on the designs that DTSC is requiring you to do, right?
Right. I don't have off the top of my head, Maurice, and I apologize, a breakdown, but, you know, as well as our time, there are costs. And our time, by the way, EKI offers a discount because we've worked with you for a long time, because it's a lot of work off of our standard rates of 5%. So, you know, we have always worked at sort of lower than our listed rate for the City of Emeryville. We have a lot of costs that have to do with the lab. So a lot of what's in there are laboratory analyses for soil samples, soil vapor samples, groundwater samples, air samples. A lot of costs then are related to the excavation and drilling of wells and that kind of thing. So drillers, subcontractors who are contractors to dig out the dirt, and then construction with piping and so forth. Off the top of my head, I would say that half the costs are those other costs that aren't EKI hourly costs.
And those are priced, those are items that you'd be getting competitive bids for, for the drilling and for the construction costs and that kind of thing?
Correct. The other aspect of this is this contract covers a time period up potentially to, for seven years. So there's a lot of work in the short term to get the remediation system installed and operating and finish the current phase of the process with DTSC. And then there's an ongoing operation of that system and doing the various monitoring and reporting activities for a long period of time.
So, Earl, that's the other question I have. The fact that this contract is going up to, what, 2023?
Correct.
One would hope that in the time period between 2016 and 2023, we would have new processes, new ways to do things, and yet we're projecting out costs to 2023. I'm a little unhappy with that.
Yeah, I understand the confusion and the concern that what they're designing for the city, the site, is like a treatment plant that's going to require operational costs on an annual basis. And so it's going to take a certain expertise to run it. At this point, we're committing to have EKI not only design it, manage the construction of it, but then operate it for the next seven years. So I guess there could be that opportunity where if we think there's somebody else that could operate the system, but it's not something that the city could hire its own staff to operate. We'd have to have an expert to do that.
I understand that, but I think we are closing all of our options over a fairly extended period for a big chunk of change, and I just wanted to voice my concern about that and would like to see if we can get some action. And let me move on beyond that. The other thing that I'm concerned about with this site is that on Site B, we got $25 million in Polanco funds from the polluters. So far, I don't think we've gotten Polanco funds from these polluters.
For the corp yard?
And for the corp yard. And I want to know from you, Mr. Geena, whether or not we're in the process of going after those polluters for them to repay some of these costs.
Well, yes, we are. We have identified some of the parties that are affiliated with either the ownership or are now successors to the former owners. And we are, we have initiated a Polanco actions or GADO actions against those identified parties, and we're continuing to attempt to identify other parties as well.
So what's your, so what's your motion?
So actually, it's not a motion. It's more of a request from the other members of the council to explore the possibilities of taking a harder look at this contract, a harder look at the figures, and coming back with a more acceptable figure. And also, a little more in-depth explanation of the year, how many years it is, that we're projecting out to 2023 when that gets very dicey. So I'm not making a mersion. I cannot approve this particular contract at the present time for what it is. So I'm just stating that.
I would support a second look.
Does, I have a question. If we don't approve this, does it hold up the ROPS and/or this is totally separate?
I mean, this is connected to the ROPS in the sense that the funds that would have paid for this have been identified in the ROPS. You, as the successor agency, have just approved the ROPS as part of the consent calendar. The point, the point being that the funds have been identified for EKI.
They're available.
They're available.
Right, okay.
That's right.
Okay. I'd be fine with taking a good look at it. That's fine by me.
That's all. Can we bring this back next month?
We'll bring it back as soon as we've had a chance to take a look at it and go through the numbers. I'll have to work with Earl.
Earl, sharpen up your pencil. We need a little better figure here.
Okay. I mean, the, the way the proposal is set up allows some flexibility for things to change, for new processes to be discovered that would make things go in a less expensive manner for certain aspects of it. So there is some flexibility built into this particular...
Well, I'd like to hear more about that, Maurice.
That sounds good. So we'll bring this back as, we need to keep it moving, so we'll bring it back.
Hopefully get it explained to you.
And, Ken, did you have separate concerns for items?
For 012?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for that item. Similarly, we just seem to have to spend more money this time for post-soil remediation groundwater activities on Site B. And when will we be done with groundwater activities?
Well, Site B, as you may recall, the big push for the initial remediation a couple years back on Site B was to excavate soils that had been impacted by a former above-ground storage tank farm that was mainly petroleum hydrocarbons on the north end of the site and then soils that had been deposited as sort of wastes by Sherwin-Williams on the southern end of the site. Those were excavated, so the shallow soils have been dug up, hauled off, cleaned up. There are also at the site volatile organic compounds in groundwater. And our initial investigations and the initial remedial action plan were directed at, there's a channel that kind of comes out of the former Chevron property through there.
Right, no, there's a plume.
And there's a plume. And we did injections of compounds to knock those VOCs, as they're called, down into basically non-toxic compounds. And that was successful in the shallow zone, so in the upper 20 feet. And then as part of ongoing, but it was to some degree, it continues because there's still some chemicals coming onto the property from the up gradient sites, which haven't been cleaned up. So that process will go on as sort of the normal maintenance of the site at some level, which is not uncommon. And then at the southern end of the site, when we were doing some additional investigations there, it was discovered that there were some higher concentrations in deeper groundwater, basically between about 20 and 40, 45 feet below the ground surface. And so that's a new area of concern. We're developing a new plan, and what this particular work authorization is for is to develop that plan, get it approved by DTSC, and do injections in that deeper zone, same thing on the site. So there will be a certain...
Let me interrupt you here. So that deeper zone was only newly discovered to be a problem?
Yes.
So at what point can we either block the plume, contain it, whatever, so that we can be done with remediating this site?
Well, to a certain degree, monitoring it and potentially some ongoing maintenance remediation is going to be a part of that site's story going forward.
So there'll never be an end?
Well, there'll be an end. You know, it might be five years out.
I mean, these multimillion, these multimillion dollar contracts, I mean, that just keeps, that'll just keep leaching, you know, into our...
Well, we're stopping it from leaching by doing injections that knock it down to non-toxic compounds.
I'm talking about the money that's being leached.
Oh, well, that aspect of it, yes. You know, it's like many other legacies of our industrial history here in the U.S., we keep dealing with them, so it's, it is what it is.
Yeah, I just don't see an end here. It's, so that disturbs me.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a motion or a recommendation?
Nope.
So do I have a motion to move this item? Does the motion get a fail?
The motion fails for lack of, well, for lack of a motion. If I could get some additional direction from the council, would the council wish for an additional look at the proposal, similar to what you just asked for as to the corp yard item?
I would support that.
Yeah.
Yes, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes. I mean, it just seems to me that if we're going to be responsible for this going forward for eternity as a city, it would just be nice to know what the projected funds, you know, beyond 2023 are going to be. So there's probably going to have to be groundwater pumping continuously, I would, you know, just something about the future, because these dollar figures look like they're higher than the land value itself by quite a bit. And I know we have funds that can support cleaning it up that are, have nothing to do directly with the land value, but still, we, you know, just hard to...
On Site B, not on the, not on the...
Yet, not on the corp yard.
Not on the corp yard.
We have potential funds, I guess is what you could say.
Okay, so staff can bring back a revised proposal then at a future meeting. Thank you.
A more modest proposal.
All right, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting. We are now moving on to the green agenda. This is the regular city council meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order and convene this meeting in the memory of David Bowie. We all, please join me to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please note that we are all still here, and I am so glad because we have a special order of the day, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville honoring Assistant to the City Manager/City Clerk Karen Hempel upon her retirement from the City of Emeryville City Manager's Office after 24 years of continuous and honorable service. So Karen, will you please rise so I can read this to you? Whereas Karen Hempel began her career with the City of Emeryville on November 4, 1991 as a source reductions recycle specialist, and from that time forward to her last day on the job as the Assistant to the City Manager/City Clerk, December 31, 2015, has distinguished herself as a valued city leader. And whereas Karen has promoted and became the first environmental program manager on January 1, 1995, in the Public Works Department, where she negotiated two solid waste franchises which provided the community with the lowest rates in the county and a deeply discounted compost program which showed her passion and commitment to the members of the community. And whereas Karen began working in the City Manager's Office and became City Assistant to the City Manager on February 1, 1997, and on July 1, 2002, became the Assistant to the City Manager/City Clerk, where she brought technology to City Hall with the advanced public noticing web live streaming of city council meetings and an automated agenda system. And whereas Karen was instrumental in establishing the Emery Go Round and the Property Business Improvement District, P-Bid, with her most recent achievement in the passing of the most current 15-year P-Bid, demonstrating her passion and dedication to public transportation and improving the quality of life for citizens in the community. And whereas Karen was the lead staff involved in the charter city and transfer tax elections and changing the city's election process to even numbered years. And whereas Karen's accomplishments also include traffic calming, the revitalization of Temescal Creek Park and the Tri-Valley Preservation Plan. And now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby extends its sincere appreciation to Karen Hempel for 24 years of continuous and honorable service to the City of Emeryville and its citizens. And be it further resolved that the City of Emeryville wishes Karen Hempel many years of fulfilling retirement as she embarks on her favorite things in life, including traveling, reading, volunteering for local nonprofits, and spending time with her family. Adopted by the City Council of the City of Emeryville at a regular meeting held on January 19, 2016.
Thank you.
Karen, there's also a plaque.
Thank you. I had a wonderful career here. In fact, I can't think of a better career here. I kind of feel that I grew up with the city. You know, when I first came here, the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was, I think, still under construction. You know, the city was, unfortunately, still had that reputation of not necessarily being the most attractive part of the East Bay to live or work. And I, you know, had been a part of it with people like John Flores, Harry Heck, Mike Biddle, just so many people who, you know, and all of you, I mean, Nora, you know, when you, I think you're the only one that was on the council when I first came here. And it's been wonderful to see how the little city that could has become. And I think that only better things will happen in the future with the city. And I'm right across the border. I'm in greater Emeryville, so you'll be seeing me at Berkeley. We used to call it Baja Berkeley, but now I think it's now greater Emeryville. And you'll be seeing me, you know, at Berkeley Bowl and probably at the senior center, though every time I've said that, Brad kind of shudders. But you'll be seeing me around, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
So, Mayor, this is a action by the city council, so if I could have a motion.
Move approval for a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And at this time, we're on to item four, public comment. At this time, I will entertain public comments on items on the agenda or not on the agenda, excuse me. And I have several comment cards filled out already, and you folks have been waiting for some time. I have Richard Ambro, Susan Heileman, Lynn Perkins, and Joy as well. So, Richard?
Hello, I'm Richard Ambro, and I've lived at 1264 64th Street for 27 years. And I want to bring to the attention of the city council a grievous situation that's developed recently, this winter, on my street. It's focused on squatters in empty buildings at 1270 64th Street, and it's the property of Laurel Baldry, known as Flash. And it's scary. I don't know how many there are. The police have visited the property recently and say that there are many, and it constitutes a threat to the neighborhood. We'd like to see the, an item on this problem put on the next agenda so that we could maybe have the police report produced in detail, bring in more neighbors to explain how they feel and think about the, and, you know, there are people who would love to buy that property and fix it up, make it part of our neighborhood again. It's not a part of our neighborhood anymore. It's a blight. It's a shame, and so on. So if you have any questions, fine, but that's, I've been asked many times, several times, actually, by Councilwoman Nora Davis, what's happening with Flash's house? And I've always had the same thing. She says she's going to fix it up. Well, there was a fire two years ago. It was boarded up, red-tagged, and she comes once in a great while, cleans it out a little bit, and then she says, oh, I'm going to fix it up. Nothing's happened. So, I don't know. We would like, we would like an item discussed on the next agenda to discuss this problem along with the police report and so on. And something really should be done. It's a threat to our neighborhood. It's a blight. It's a shame. It truly is a shame. Our neighborhood has gotten much better in the last 27 years. There used to be a dope house on this, on my block. It's much better now, so thank you. I think there are about three other people who would like to speak as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan Heileman.
Hi, I live at 1268, right next to 1270. I've been there almost 17 years. And a few months ago, when we noticed that the front door of Flash's house was open, I was able to reach her, and she arranged for a locksmith to come and supposedly put a new lock. She called me back and said that he said he could not fix it because it needed carpentry work. After that, nothing was done. I could not reach her anymore, so I don't know why she isn't doing anything. She did say she was going to fix it, move back in, but it's been more than two years, so I wish she would do something.
Thank you. Lynn Perkins?
Hi, my name's Lynn Perkins, and I live at 1258 64th Street. And I am a few houses down from that property. Apparently, her house came before the Committee on Preservation, I think that's the name of it, here. And it said that the house was secured and nothing has, nothing was done because it was secured, and then I think... And then I think the agency lost whatever the mandate was for creating protocol for after to follow up because Michael Biddle and Victor Gonzalez were supposed to follow up on that with the Community Preservation Committee. And that was after the fire had happened. Nothing has happened since that time, as far as I can research into the records. We do need to have somebody secure the property as soon as possible. It's really not appropriate for it to be open, squatters in the property. It's dangerous. There's no heat, of course. It's been quite cold. We don't know how people are heating inside of it. They could be using propane. They could cause a fire, explosion, damage other properties. It's really a high risk. And so the sooner the better that this property is addressed. It would be deeply appreciated by the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Ruth?
Does the city know how to reach the owner?
No, not anymore.
Ruth? Jump right in. My name's Joy. This is Zion. We live at 1262 64th Street, so obviously on the same issue. The neighborhood has changed in the seven years that we've been there. It's getting a lot more children on the block, as you can see. And that's the biggest concern, is that there's kids that are, you know, who'd like to ride their bikes up and down the street. One of the neighbors has witnessed at least four different sets of squatters between the... There's two buildings on the property, one in the front, one in the back. There's also believed to have either like an animal issue, skunks or raccoons or both, on the property. The vegetation is completely overgrown, so the fire hazard issue is of deep concern. I have emailed Laura without response. But yeah, just the doors have continuously been kicked in. And actually, the one neighbor who lives to the left of the house spoke to one of the squatters, who said, "Oh yeah, I'm getting out of here because the people who live in the back house are really scary." So if we've got squatters fleeing the house, then it's probably not the best situation. So we would all like to see something happen. We've contacted Emery PD. I've spoken to Captain Dower personally. And, you know, we've been told that we should speak to the City Council and then to call anytime we see someone. And people aren't stupid. They come and go when no one's there. So they're able to kind of fly under the radar. So yeah, that's my two cents on the situation. Anything to say? No?
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this topic before we move on to other topics? Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio, and I live at 1264 Ocean Avenue. And the city moved into my property and red-targeted, and I'm now homeless, along with my three other guests homeless. So the question of homeless is not something strange to me. It's a question of some policy by the City Council, new or old one. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody right now. But the question of homeless has been bothering me for a long time. And all you need to do is to go around any McDonald's or any place that has a roof, and you'll see dozens and dozens of homeless sleeping there. And so this society needs to think about where to put the homeless. Of course, these people, they complain that the homeless are moving in. But where do these people are going to move when it raining? You see, if you don't have any tent, like I have an homeless in my backyard, live in a tent, and I have a place to stay with my ex-wife, it's not really a problem for me. But the two women that were with me, one of them used to be a survivor. She survived the Holocaust, and she's grieving about, you know, the homeless situation here that is worse than it was with the torture of Buchenwald. And this is disgusting. This society here has to do something about it, and I have a complaint. I claim with the MTC, the Board of the People who Control the Bay Bridge, I did ask them, I plead them, "Don't destroy the old bridge. Put the homeless there." Oh, no. We contracted a million dollars to destroy the bridge. And if we put the homeless, those people who are going to make money are not going to have a good business. So there is something real wrong here. I sympathize with the people. They don't want it. They don't like to see the homeless. But I don't know. I didn't see any of them that I took homeless home to take care of. None of you have known that either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carpio. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this?
Hi, Ken Murkowski. With respect to the Emery Ground, I'd like to see the city apply for a full refund of residential assessments instead of only for seniors. There's certainly enough money there at the county that we should be entitled to get that. So I'd like to urge that to happen. And then regarding the potential merger of MTC and A-Bag, January 22nd is the first hearing about it. It's a three-hour meeting from 9:00 to 12:00, and anybody that wants to comment on it. But actually, the resolution that established the process says that if they don't agree to a merger, that MTC will take over the A-Bag planning. That's not a good idea for the region. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak a public comment? I'd like to ask staff if it would be possible to get a report to address these folks' concerns. Is it the next available meeting, the second meeting in February, which is February 16th?
Well, with regard to the code enforcement issues, we can certainly provide you an update at the February 16th meeting. The squatters issue, I would defer to the Police Department.
Dante, do you have anything? Well, I'm not asking for a report right now, but would you be able to provide a report for the February 16th meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could ask to be added to that report. The city has been aware that this has been a problem for years and years and years. We have, in response to your question about, did you able to contact Flash? I have tried to contact her over the years many times. I have never received a response. Our code enforcement people have never received a response from numerous letters that have been sent out. Rather than just a report coming back, I would hope that we would have an action plan. This is an absolute blight on 64th Street. And now it's become a dangerous blight. We have no action plan here of how to correct that. That's what I would like to see coming back to this council.
I support that. Okay. So with that, we're going to close public comment. Is there a City Manager's report?
Very quickly, Madam Mayor, members of the council, keep your fingers crossed, along with the rest of us, that the gymnasium at ECCL will be opening tomorrow for the students, not for the public, but for the students. So we will... Perhaps Pedro can send out a quick email confirming some good news tomorrow. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Moving on to item six. Is there any...
I move the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull the minutes for December 15th and also to recognize that we have a revise on the 6.5 item on the states and times.
Yeah, I want to pull 6.5 for to ask the question.
Oh, okay. But let me just...
And I'd like to pull 6.8, 6.1.
I would support your motion for the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
On the action minutes, on item 8.4, page 5 of 8, under B, it says, "Change the regular meeting date and time of public works to the second Tuesday of the month." That's not right. It should be the third Tuesday of the month. So let's make that correction. Okay?
Public Works. Public Works.
Public Works.
So...
It's on Thursday. Did you say Tuesday?
Third Thursday. Right, right. Thank you, thank you. Hit that, Tom. Third Thursday.
So since we're on those committees, if I understand the action, I just need clarification. The second Thursday of the month at 11:00 would be public safety, and the third Thursday is the...
Public Works.
Public Works.
Right.
Okay. All right.
Move approval.
Wait, there's... Should we take care of item 6.8, and then we'll... Maybe we can do them all at once? Jack?
Yes, although I had a calendar question too. Maybe I'll...
Sure.
Is that under 6.5? Is the master calendar for the year, or where is that?
So we were talking about the master calendar in item 6.2, which was the action minutes.
Okay. I'll have to leave it for another time. Okay, so 6.8 is the item for the park. I had a couple of comments and a question. One of the things that I want to understand is how much of the park is being replaced in terms of the features there, the play features?
So we're going to renovate all the play areas. There's two play areas. There's one for a preschool age structure, which includes a swing set, and then there's another one for a school age structure, older kids, and that swing set. And so for the older kids, that play structure is primarily going to be salvaged. We're going to keep as much of it as we can. There's a few parts that we need to replace. And then we're going to put a new rubberized surfacing down. In the preschool age area, it's going to get a completely new structure of a similar type and new swing sets of a similar type and new rubberized surfacing.
Okay. So I've brought this up before, and the... I'm happy when we do update the parks. However, I also feel that we're too quick to select things out of a catalog and that our parks feel kind of placeless. And especially for a place that is so well-known for public art. I think it should be better integrated into our parks. And so every time it comes up for us to refresh a park, I'm going to bring this up because this is a park that could be anywhere. And I want to move away from that. Now, I understand that, you know, safety becomes an issue, and then you feel an urgency to immediately replace the items. But that means that we're then just preserving this kind of plastic-out-of-the-box features. And I think we need to think more deeply about it. So I'd like to encourage staff, whether it's through the budgeting process or through a master planning process, in looking at our parks and thinking about this differently. And then finally, one of the features that I just really don't like are those low-balance beams. I don't think that they get a lot of use. There are other balance features in the play area, and they tend to just be tripping hazards because they're so low to the ground. So if staff could come up with an alternative in that space, I think that that would be a much better use of the space.
In response to that, we did speak with the vendor, and they can offer like a rocking horse kind of feature with the spring on it for the same price. Or they could eliminate that feature if you just want to have more open space. So those would be the options that the vendor would suggest.
I think that either one of those is preferable to those low-balance beams. I think they restrict children being able to run freely, and we have other balance features.
Mayor, I agree with you on the balance beam, but I'm not as quite enchanted with the rocking horse because the big kids destroy those things fairly quickly, as we've learned over in Temescal Creek Park. So why don't we just eliminate it and have a little space for kids to run around?
And that works.
Okay. Yeah, I'd support that.
I have a comment about this. This area of playground equipment is controlled by all kinds of litigation. The liability issues are pretty huge for cities. And the design of this equipment has got all of this insurance behind it. However, there's an artist who the Public Art Fund in New York supported and managed to create new and interesting structures that have cleared some kind of insurance bar that are alternatives that maybe we could look at. Just there's...
Why don't we ask the art committee to rethink?
Maybe they should.
I'm not kidding.
No, I would be very supportive of that idea, something that moves away from what we've been doing in the last couple of parks. Yeah.
If I may just chime in, we are, as you may know, embarking on a public art master plan with the Public Art Committee. And this may be a topic that they may want to address in the Public Art Master Plan.
That's a good suggestion, Charlie. Yeah, I would like to see that.
So do we have a motion on this?
Yeah, with that, I'll move the item. Yeah.
So to be clear, there was a motion and a second on the consent items, except for the items that were pulled by the various council members.
Yes.
And then we had discussed... I want to make sure that we're capturing all of this correctly.
You tell me what we should do next.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes.
If I can get a vote on all of the items on the consent calendar that were not pulled by the individual council members, so with the exception of items 6.2, 6.5, and 6.8.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Right. And then as to the action minutes, item 6.2, with the amendments made by Councilmember Davis. If I can get a motion and second on that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
I move 6.5.
Second.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And as to item 6.8.
With the removal of the balance beam. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We have no public hearings this evening, so now we get to the action part of the agenda. The action items. First, we have item 8.1, Amendments to Chapter 28, Title V of Emeryville Municipal Code. And we have our fine Assistant City Attorney to give us a presentation.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. I have a PowerPoint presentation for you tonight. Okay. So tonight, I'm here to present on proposed amendments to the Emeryville Municipal Code as they relate to medical marijuana. And so the slide here is just to give you a roadmap of where I'm going to go tonight on the presentation. I know that there's a lot of information out there. You might have a lot of questions. And so we'll start with a quick look back with some background information, some information on the new state act that's come out, the State Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, which I will sometimes refer to as the MMRS-A. There's also the proposed urgency ordinance on tonight's agenda and a proposed regular ordinance as well. And because this item differs in your regular items, we've included a summary as to what the proposed recommendations on action are for tonight. And then at the end, I'll, of course, be taking questions, as well as other staff. So although some of this information may be well-known, I think it's important to understand where we have been as it relates to medical marijuana. In 1970, Congress enacted the Federal Controlled Substances Act. And this prohibits all marijuana, including medical marijuana. And this remains true today, that all marijuana is prohibited under federal law. What has changed over the years with different federal administrations... What has changed over the years with different federal administrations is the enforcement of the prohibition. Then, in 1996, the California voters adopted Proposition 215, which provided for a limited defense under state law for the possession and cultivation of medical marijuana. And it's been known as the Compassionate Use Act of 1996, and it's codified at California Health and Safety Code, Section 11362.5. Following Proposition 215, the state legislature enacted the Medical Marijuana Program Act as a way to implement Proposition 215. And basically, it puts together a program for primary caregivers and qualified patients to collectively or cooperatively cultivate marijuana for medical purposes. However, despite Prop. 215 and the MMPA, cities across the state were not on board with allowing or facilitating medical marijuana. Therefore, many cities, including the city of Emeryville, adopted ordinances prohibiting uses and activities related to medical marijuana. In 2006, Emeryville adopted an ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation and distribution of medical marijuana. So, with this conflict between federal, state, and local law, of course, we have litigation. And that ensued for many years. However, in 2013, the California Supreme Court weighed in and held that neither Proposition 215 nor the state law preempted cities' ability to prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries. And I've included the case site for that California Supreme Court case on the PowerPoint slide. And this was really a pivotal moment in sort of the discussion on medical marijuana and its state in the state of California. And the rationale behind the city of Riverside case has been extended to cultivation as well, meaning that cities can prohibit cultivation of medical marijuana. And so, that leads us to today. And the adoption of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. And this is really a landmark piece of state legislation. On October 9, 2015, Governor Brown signed AB 243 and AB 266 and SB 643. And they became effective January 1 of this year. And this bill, or sorry, this act, was the result of a broad coalition of stakeholders coming together to develop a comprehensive regulatory scheme to protect public safety by imposing uniform safety standards while preserving local control. Just a few examples. For example, with AB 266, it requires the establishment of uniform state minimum health and safety standards, testing standards, and security requirements at dispensaries and transport. With AB 243, that licenses and regulates indoor and outdoor cultivation sites and establishes standards for pesticide use at cultivation sites. And so, up on the slide, you'll see that AB 266 established a dual licensing structure for medical marijuana, requiring both state and a local license to operate lawfully. AB 243 established a regulatory and licensing structure for cultivation sites. And then, SB 643 relates more to the licensing of medical marijuana businesses and regulates physicians. So, the question becomes, how does this landmark state legislation impact cities? And what's important for cities is that it recognizes local control. To operate lawfully, dispensaries and cultivation sites must have both state and local licenses or permits. It allows for local governments to enforce both state and local laws. However, it does preempt cities' ability to regulate transportation. For example, to give you an example to help you understand this preemption, if a medical marijuana dispensary is operating lawfully in Oakland and an Emeryville resident wants a delivery, the Oakland dispensary could not deliver in Emeryville if Emeryville adopts a... or, sorry. I confused examples there. It's if they're driving through Emeryville. So, somebody in Oakland, somebody in Berkeley orders from Oakland, they can drive along San Pablo to make a delivery in Berkeley. And so, then, the question becomes, why do cities have to act now? I know that out there is a March 1 deadline, and I'm going to get to that in a minute. There's really two reasons that cities are acting now. The first relates to deliveries. Delivery is allowed in a city unless the city adopts a specific prohibition against delivery. And we'll get into what exactly delivery means in a couple of slides when I go ahead and discuss the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance. The March 1 deadline comes out of ordinances as it relates to cultivation. There is a provision in the new MMRS-A that has been interpreted as requiring cities to act by March 1 to either prohibit or regulate cultivation because if they don't, then the state becomes the sole licensing authority in the city. And there is some cleanup legislation being circulated right now. AB 21 is an effort to get this March 1 deadline removed. AB 21 is slowly taking on a new look every day because both advocates and cities and really all the stakeholders involved are identifying the need for potential cleanup with the new state legislation as everybody's sort of getting used to what is going to be the new norm here. So, but AB 21 doesn't necessarily impact or change what is being proposed tonight. And so, then, tonight with both the urgency ordinance and the regular ordinance, there's two goals. The first goal is to maintain the status quo and the second is to maintain local control. And the reason for doing this is by doing so, this gives the city council time to consider how the city may want to allow for medical marijuana. Potential regulations that accommodate medical marijuana use may need to be first considered by the Planning Commission before the city council could take action. In addition, cities are still trying to figure out how the state, how the new state regulatory framework will be implemented. The MMRS-A anticipates that state agencies will be adopting regulations to implement the regulatory scheme. The stated anticipated timeframe for state implementation is 2018. So, really, these amendments are designed to just sort of press pause and let stop and freeze everything where it is while we figure out how to move forward. And so, the urgency ordinance makes the prohibition on delivery explicit. The current ordinance prohibits distribution, which implicitly includes delivery, but it does not make it explicit. So, for this reason, we're recommending that the city council adopt an urgency ordinance to make the prohibition of delivery explicit... sorry, explicit. It's important to discuss what this prohibition does not include. The delivery in the urgency ordinance is defined to mean the commercial delivery as it is defined in the new MMRS-A. So, for example, if there is a qualified patient within the city of Emeryville, they could send, you know, their qualified caregiver to go pick up medicine in Oakland where there might be a licensed dispensary and to bring it back to Emeryville. That would not constitute delivery because it's not commercial in nature. It's very similar to if you have a spouse who's sick and they send the other spouse to go pick up antibiotics for them at CVS. And so, the urgency ordinance does require that the city council find that immediate action is necessary to preserve the public peace, health, or safety. With respect to the findings, these findings do not really preclude any future action by the city council. They recognize the council's past findings and they recognize that there's an immediate need to preserve the status quo in order to allow time to fully consider how and if future regulations could mitigate or eliminate some of the identified secondary effects of marijuana. So, again, nothing about the findings and the proposed ordinance will constrain the city council in any future action. And it also requires a four-fifth vote by the city council. So, at the same time, we are also proposing that the city council adopt a regular ordinance. And the reason for this is generally, you always bring forward a regular ordinance at the same time as an urgency ordinance if, for some reason, the urgency ordinance is struck down. The regular ordinance is usually in place at that point. And so, the regular ordinance prohibits delivery of marijuana. And again, the delivery is tied to the state definition in the MMRS-A. The regular ordinance is a repeal and replace. And the reason for that is the ordinance, as drafted, removes potential inconsistencies between the new MMRS-A and local law. However, what the new ordinance, what the new proposed regular ordinance does is it restates a prohibition on all marijuana, both medicinal and recreational. And that's, again, just restating the status quo or what has been the status quo up until very recently. And so, tonight, the proposed action is to make a motion to introduce the urgency ordinance by title only, take public comment on the urgency ordinance, and then adopt it by fourth, fifth vote. And then, after that, the next proposed recommended action is to introduce the regular ordinance by title only, to take public comment on the regular ordinance, and then to adopt it. And with that is now questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
What is meant by commercial delivery?
Commercial delivery is delivery by a medical marijuana dispensary.
So, the qualified patient has to make their own arrangements to get it? They can't send a messenger... the dispensary can't send a messenger to the home?
That would be correct.
Okay. So, the energy, the initiative has to come from the patient, not from the dispensary?
Correct.
Are there any other clarifying questions?
Okay, so, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned something about the Planning Commission being involved if there were any proposals. Could you explain that a little bit more for me? Like, where would the Planning Commission come into play and how would it relate to what we're talking about this evening?
Sure. So, for medical marijuana dispensaries and cultivation, typically, the way the cities regulate dispensaries and cultivation is through their land use powers.
Right.
And so, some cities require a conditional use permit. There may need to be sequoada. And so, for that, because of state law, you would need to first go to the Planning Commission to have them weigh in on what the zoning ordinance should be that would require the conditional use permit. Or, it might be a minor use permit or administrative permit. But basically, the framework for setting up to impose conditions would be done through zoning, and that goes first to the Planning Commission and then on to the city council.
But, at this point, with what we have on the books, which is a prohibition, nothing would come before the PC at this point, right? There couldn't be a proposed dispensary because we're prohibiting it?
That is correct. There's, I believe, there's a footnote in the staff report that references a case that when you're just simply restating the status quo, that you don't need to go back to the Planning Commission. So, we have a prohibition on the books, both in Chapter 28 of Title V, which we're discussing tonight. And then, there's also a section in the planning regulations that prohibit medical marijuana dispensaries. And I'm sorry, I don't have that side off the top of my head. But, we would need, if the city council wanted to move off of that prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries, we would need to go back to the Planning Commission, especially for that regulation in the zoning code that prohibits medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay. And then, a further question that I have. When we talk about reinforcing the status quo and what we're doing here tonight and characterize it as kind of hitting pause while we consider things further or possibly think about it, what does that timeline look like? How long does pause last?
Well, I think part of that is up to the city council, I'm guessing. I'm hoping the city attorney might weigh in.
Sure, yes, yeah. The pause is as long as you want it to be. It's as long as the council feels it needs in order to study the issue. The idea behind these ordinances, as Andrea said, was to give the council the greatest amount of flexibility in being able to study any future changes to its approach to medical marijuana. So, by adopting these, these ordinances don't commit you to a particular timeframe to act. It gives, again, with the idea being that we want to give you the greatest amount of flexibility to study it for as long as you need to study it. You can take as long as you feel it is necessary. So that if the council doesn't take any further action beyond tonight, if they adopt both ordinances and then take no further action, then the current prohibition on all medical marijuana would stay put. But, if you decide to act a month from now, a year from now, two years from now, you have the ability to do that.
Okay. What about this March? I don't understand this March 1 deadline.
The March 1 deadline was dealing specifically with cultivation and the ability to regulate cultivation. And the idea being that, as Andrea said, the new state regulations now set up a program for the state to regulate cultivation. And the idea being, and since there's this dual program, there's this dual licensing on both the state level and the local level. And the state law basically says that if the locals had not implemented a local regulation or regulatory scheme for cultivation by March 1, then the state regulatory scheme would apply. Since Emeryville already has a prohibition on regulation, I'm sorry, prohibition on cultivation, the March 1 deadline doesn't apply to us. And that's why the cultivation piece of it is not in the urgency ordinance because we've already acted as to cultivation. The only piece that is in the urgency ordinance is the delivery because the delivery is a new aspect or component of this new state law, which is not explicitly defined or explicitly addressed in our current regulations.
So, Michael, do we lose any ground in local control if we don't define delivery specifically?
Well, if we don't define delivery explicitly, there is an argument out there that our current regulations don't encompass delivery. And, you know, we can argue the state, and the city would argue that our prohibition on distribution includes delivery. There are folks out there that might perhaps argue, well, you know, it doesn't. So, the purpose behind the urgency ordinance is to make clear that the city's intent by prohibiting distribution was also to prohibit delivery. And then, of course, and so that would take effect immediately. And then, of course, if you wanted to later rethink, relook at your whole approach to all aspects of medical marijuana cultivation, distribution, including delivery, you could do that at a future time on your timeframe.
Any more clarifying questions?
No, I'd like to move to read by title only.
I'd like to hear public comment.
So, you have to move, move title only.
I second that.
This is as to the urgency ordinance?
The urgency ordinance.
Thank you. An urgency ordinance of the city, oh, I'm sorry, could I get a vote on that, please?
Do we need a roll call?
Yes, please.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Thank you. An urgency ordinance of the city of Emeryville amending Section 5-28.01 sub-K and 5-28.04 sub-A of the Emeryville Municipal Code, findings, and medical marijuana dispensaries prohibited, penalties. The SEQA determination is exempt pursuant to Section 15061 sub-B 3 of the California SEQA Guidelines.
Can we have public comment?
Yes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Mr. Bukowski?
Yes. Good evening. I was the only councilmember who voted against this prohibition to start with. Over 70% of Emeryville voters voted for Prop 215. You're not stopping any medical marijuana in the city. I'm a licensed patient. I can call anybody and they're going to come and deliver it. All you're doing is not collecting the tax money, which is really foolish. You know, you're a progressive city council, you know, days of outlawing marijuana are behind us. There's one city that's going to use the money collected from medical marijuana for affordable housing. You know, that's a pretty good idea, I think. I would strongly suggest that you do not adopt the urgency ordinance in that you, the status quo is that anybody that wants is calling up and getting it delivered anyway. That's the real status quo. You want to make it a crime to smoke marijuana in Emeryville now? I think not a good idea. Thank you.
Mr. Carpio?
I'm concerned about the delivery and transportation. I mean, if you get caught with marijuana in your car, they will seize your car. I mean, like the Fed do, you know, they just take everything from you, your car and whatever. So, people who want to deliver, they may take the public transportation. They're not going to take the bus. They're not going to put the people out either. Or you could take the UBO or the fly me or whatever. So, I think that if we want to do and make something really specific, we really have to study the delivery and the transportation, because that's very crucial. You cannot deliver, you cannot deliver, there is no marijuana business at all. You know, very few people will walk down the street or 10 blocks to go get to Oakland to get some of their stuff. You would have to deliver. And then, automatically, we get, you know, a bunch of drivers and cars that are unsuspicious of being stopped by the police, and the police smell the stuff and they take the car. And so, I mean, it's going to put the city council in a bind here. You have to be real careful with this one. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who'd wish to speak on this item?
Move the urgency.
Nope, we have one more person, please.
Hello, my name is Sue Taylor. I live in Berkeley. I own property here in Emeryville. I'm a commissioner on aging for Alameda County, but I'm not here in that capacity tonight. I work with seniors in medical cannabis, and oftentimes, patients that are 80 and 90, they can't travel to a dispensary, so they're delivered. And reputable city and state-regulated dispensaries like Harborside and Berkeley Patients Group, they have delivery services, but there's documentation for those delivery drivers as well as for the patients who's requiring the medicine. Those same government identification, like your driver's license and your doctor's recommendation, all those things have to be in place. And when they're transporting the medicine from one city to another, they have documentation in the car. The drivers have documentations with them in the car that stated how much medicine is in the car. Everything is there legally that you really need. So, like one gentleman said, if you don't do it, then you are missing a part of the taxes, revenue for the city. But it's not a bad thing. But look into it. Medical cannabis is not going away. And the more you could regulate it within your city, the more successful it'll be. We've been, I've been going to the medical cannabis commission for cultivation and for dispensary. It's been a very long process, and I go to all of the meetings for the information. But it gives them control of what they want, what they don't want, what they will allow in their city, and what they will not. And you have that capability to say what you want and what you don't want. But you have to get the information so you could be strong in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move the urgency ordinance.
I'd like to have some discussion first.
Well, a second, so we can discuss it.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Jack?
Yeah, I want to say that I appreciate the comments here this evening from the public. And for me, when I first read the staff report, I had some concerns around what felt like a kind of tightening up around the prohibitions, because I agree, medical marijuana is not going away, and I'm interested in local control and in the regulation of it and in revisiting our policies toward it. And so, for me, it's very important, I look at this as a moment to kind of reset and to make sure that we have all the tools necessary in order to determine what kind of policies we would like going forward. But this is, for me, not a vote to stop discussion about medical marijuana in our city, but a place to begin thinking about it. And so, again, when I asked about the timeline, I would like to see this come back to council soon for our consideration. And those are my comments.
Scott, do you have any comments?
I just agree, I agree with everything Jack just said, that I think that we need to come back and discuss this soon.
And I agree, I would like to discuss it tonight, a little later tonight. If, Ruth and Nora, if you don't have any further comments, I just want to add that there's, I want to thank Ms. Taylor for her comments. And I think that none of us here on council wish to take any action that would have harm to any worker or to any patients in Emeryville. And I am hoping that this is just a logistical step that we need to take in order to have a broader conversation later tonight. And with that, I will ask for this vote to be called by roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Move the amendments to Chapter 28.
If I can get a motion to read that by title only first.
Sure, move to read by title only.
Second.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville to repeal and replace Chapter 28 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code, medical marijuana dispensaries with a SEQA determination, and that it is exempt pursuant to Section 15061 sub-B 3 of the California SEQA Guidelines.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to read by title, then...
Only if I can get a motion on the ordinance itself, please.
Now, do we have a motion on the ordinance?
Wait a minute, did we take a vote on the motion to read by title only?
We did not. We did not. Should we do that quickly?
I'm sorry, okay.
Got ahead of... Can we call the roll to read by title?
Sorry about that.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Move the resolution, or actually, move the amendments.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Yes.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Aye.
Councilmember Atkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
And with that, we can move on to item 8.1.3 and continue the same discussion. So, I guess I should move to the lectern. And council has received memo that I prepared to open up this discussion, and I have further comments that I will distribute on paper, but I will be reading aloud, so everyone will hear what I have to say. But I'll start with the memo that you already have and that was included in the agenda packet. And I have to apologize, I don't have a nifty PowerPoint to present to you this evening. Every single person in my family has been sick for the last week, but we're all better now. And I've been thinking about medical marijuana a lot, although I'm not a patient. So, a little background, medical cannabis provides a safe means to treat numerous diseases, ailments, and conditions. Among other conditions, studies have demonstrated its efficacy in the treatment of cancer, epilepsy, PTSD, depression, and AIDS. Medical marijuana was made legal in the state of California in 1996 with the passage of Proposition 215, which is known as the Compassionate Use Act. However, Proposition 215 does not supersede federal law under which there remains a ban on the drug. Emeryville currently has a ban on medical marijuana dispensaries, which was put into place when there was no statewide framework for industry regulation. The ban effectively kept our city staff from dealing with inconsistencies between state and federal laws regarding medical marijuana. However, with the recent passage of the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act, MMRSAs, medical marijuana will be regulated for the first time in California history, ostensibly lowering the risk of conflict with federal enforcement. The new laws went into effect on January 1st, 2016. Regulations are expected in early 2017. Licensing under the new framework is expected in early 2018. Both the League of Cities and the California Police Chiefs Association co-sponsored early drafts of legislation instilling high degrees of local control into the language of the MMRSAs. With regulation on the horizon, Emeryville is poised to take advantage of the tax and other revenue from this burgeoning industry. Our neighbors in Oakland house the dispensary Harborside Health Center, which alone conducts $25 million in medical sales annually. Harborside is Oakland's second-largest retail taxpayer. The MM, excuse me, there's a typo, MMRSAs, apply stringent rules on the industry, much of which has been heretofore run underground. Newly mandatory lab testing for potency pesticides and molds will likely require more facilities than currently exist, in terms of labs, that is. With Emeryville's existing biotech corridor, we are in a prime position to house the types of labs that the MMRSAs calls for. Emeryville's retail tax base has been solid in recent history. However, the future of traditional brick-and-mortar retail has been called into question by the rise of internet sales. While the economy is strong, this is a good time to consider ways of strengthening and diversifying the city's revenue streams. It's likely that November 2016 will see a ballot initiative in California addressing legalization of recreational cannabis for adults. This makes action on the city's part all the more time-sensitive so that Emeryville can be well-positioned as an industry-friendly municipality for what is already a $30-plus billion industry. And then, included in the agenda packet in my memo are just a selection of interesting stats that I will not read through. Council may be familiar with the fact that the city of San Leandro recently permitted their first dispensary. They went through a lengthy process in which they hired a consultant who boiled it down to two different possible dispensaries, and they settled on one, which is Harborside, which also happens to be that largest dispensary in Oakland, which I have had the privilege of touring a couple of times, and I was very impressed. And then, the second memo that I would like to read from that I just distributed to council is a response to our current code. So, it's a response to the potential adverse effects that were noted in Emeryville's municipal code, which include offensive odors, trespassing, theft, violent encounters between growers and persons attempting to steal plants, fire hazards, increased crime in and about the dispensary, robberies of customers, negative impacts on nearby business, nuisance problems, and increased DUI incidents. So, these are all fears that may have been stated in relation to passing the ban that happened in 2006. I wasn't there, but these were in the staff report. Opponents of medical marijuana frequently claim that medical marijuana dispensaries are associated with an increase in crime rates, pointing to anecdotal reports of crime in and around medical marijuana dispensaries. The evidence on the question, however, is overwhelmingly indicating that these concerns are unfounded. Systematic and rigorous studies have consistently found no increase and sometimes even a decrease in crime near medical marijuana facilities. A 2014 study, which examined 16 years of data from 11 states with medical marijuana legislation, found that such legislation was correlated with a decrease in both homicide and assault rates. Further, they found that robbery and burglary rates were unaffected by medicinal marijuana legislation, which runs counter to the claim that dispensaries and growhouses lead to an increase in victimization. A 2012 UCLA study on Sacramento reached similar conclusions, finding that density of medical marijuana dispensaries was not associated with violent or property crime rates. And a 2011 study conducted in Denver found decreases in crime rates near dispensaries and no perception of an uptick in crime among residents. These studies are consistent with the experience in Oakland and San Francisco, where liberal dispensary ordinances permitting cannabis activity have not been associated with increases in crime or neighborhood complaints. Oakland officials regulating its regulated medical cannabis businesses have highlighted the high levels of compliance of its operators and the lack of negative impact on the community as reflected by very few complaints or negative incidents. Between 2006 and 2013, in San Francisco, SF Weekly reports that there have been a grand total of 37 citizen complaints filed against the city's two dozen licensed dispensaries, largely for minor annoyances, such as an illuminated sign, which was immediately turned off after the complaint, and a marijuana brownie, which was alleged to contain Vicodin. It was tested, and it did not. When crime does occur in and around marijuana dispensaries, it's at a similar or lower rate to that of other businesses. In Denver, for instance, a police report found that the rate of crime at marijuana dispensaries was below that at banks or liquor stores and on par with pharmacies. And in Los Angeles, the rate of crime at dispensaries is far below that of banks. Forty-seven out of 800 dispensaries reported a theft or robbery, compared with 71 of the city's 350 banks. The concern that nearby businesses will be harmed by dispensaries is similarly unfounded. Successful dispensaries are likely to attract additional customers to other businesses in the area. In Oakland, dispensaries have revitalized unused properties and improved public safety. According to former Oakland City Administrator Barbara Kelly, the areas around the dispensaries may be some of the safest areas in Oakland now because of the level of security, surveillance, et cetera, since the ordinance passed. A report from the Americans for Safe Access, which interviewed businesses and regulators across the state, found that cannabis dispensaries, where generally good neighbors, generated few complaints and frequently provided benefits to surrounding businesses. In addition to the potential for secondary criminal activity cited in the 2006 ban on dispensaries, the municipal code also cites a potential that medical cannabis cultivation and distribution are associated with offensive odors and fire hazards. Both of these concerns are reasons for regulation, not prohibition of cannabis businesses. Other jurisdictions can and have managed these risks intelligently through appropriate zoning and regulation. And I will, as having someone who has toured Harborside, the largest dispensary on the West Coast, I can tell you, there's no scent of anything outside. Inside is a very different story, but they have some very intense carbon filtration systems. Finally, current municipal codes suggest that permitting medical cannabis businesses may lead to an increase in cannabis DUI. It's important to note that the risks associated with driving under the influence of cannabis, while still somewhat unclear, are certainly far fewer than those associated with alcohol use. A 2015 study from the National Highway Traffic Administration found that even a blood alcohol level of 0.03%, less than half the legal limit, increased the risk of a crash by 20%. At 0.1% blood alcohol level, accident... At 0.1 percent blood alcohol level, accident risk more than quintupled. By contrast, after controlling for age, gender, and other demographic factors, the study found no association between THC blood levels and accident risk. Given the accumulated evidence, it seems that the association of medical marijuana and various negative consequences has more to do with drug-borne stereotypes and disproportionate scrutiny rather than any real relationship. While it will always be possible to point to anecdotal or isolated reports of medical marijuana-related crime and nuisance, these incidents do not imply that medical cannabis businesses create some unique risk to the safety or well-being of residents any more than any other type of business. With that, I would like to continue my presentation by inviting a couple of speakers up. The first is a medical marijuana entrepreneur, Andrea Minzworth. I'm sorry, excuse me. And Andrea, if you wouldn't mind detailing your history with the city that you told me about this afternoon as an introduction.
Sure thing. Thank you to the city of Emeryville for even being here tonight. Excuse me, getting over being sick myself. Just a little bit of background. In 2008, I moved to Emeryville, which a lot of my friends referred to as the city of young professionals. It was less expensive than San Francisco, but someone being unfamiliar with the East Bay, it was a nice transition to being, to moving into, getting into the city where I had a job. As a Moody's analyst for a few years, I actually covered the city of Emeryville when going out for bonds, then the redevelopment agency, of course, as well as a number of other cities, some AAA-rated, some below. And I worked there through the housing crash. And one of the things that I noticed was cities that made it through that were those that had, one, a diversified tax base, and, two, a strong leadership team that were looking more than just two to three years out, or however long they were, you know, in their position in that city. It was more of that long-term, eight-to-10-year, even 20-year growth of what is a city going to look like? And not only what ordinances or things that we do right now, but what do we say about who we are? And what is that name, city of young professionals, or whatever it is that someone somewhere else looks to the city? And how are you defined? I happen to work with two cities in particular, Seattle and Denver, which, of course, are in states where legalization has taken place. And, you know, in covering those both before and after the housing crash, again, you know, I saw rainy day funds being depleted. I saw school districts who were deciding between after-school programs and fixing a roof. And so when we've looked back at the last few years and what the cannabis industry has done for many cities and local governments in terms of providing for education funds, providing public health services, someone mentioned earlier that some cities have done, have planned to put their funds into affordable housing. These are all important things for a city to do, especially in a time when the economy, you know, has its ups and downs. In 2014, you know, realizing that I was often going to be the only person of color and/or woman and/or both at the table in many of my meetings, I decided to go out on my own and start my own business. And I did start a cannabis business. It's a delivery-only dispensary. We are based in Berkeley, excuse me, based in Oakland. We do service Berkeley as well. We pay our city taxes to both of those cities because they have a tax set up. In Oakland, it's the Z-tax. Berkeley, you're allowed to just to pay retail tax at the 2.5% rate. But we definitely get calls from Emeryville all the time, a lot, particularly with Pixar being here. You know, we get a lot of folks, 30-years-old, 2:00 AM, they're working crazy, and they need someone to bring them their medication so that they can get to sleep. The stories go on and on. Stay-at-home mothers, I deliver to a couple of patients who live up near Grizzly Peak, who just, who are wheelchair-bound and just can't get to a dispensary to get their medication. 2016, this year, I became the chairwoman of the Bay Area Chapter of Women Grow, which is an organization, a national organization, which seeks to promote education and empowerment of women in the cannabis industry. Women have pretty much taken over the cannabis industry, and it's refreshing as a woman, and as I said, as a person of color who has sat behind numerous, too many, important meetings that were, quite frankly, all decided by white men. And it is refreshing to be in a room of diverse thought, diverse people, who are taking over an industry which, to be honest, has had way too much of a detriment to those same communities for way too long. So I just want to leave with saying that, you know, we are part of a cannabis community. We're part of a cannabis culture. It is more than just folks sitting around, passing a joint. We do cannabis yoga. We do cannabis art. And we also offer free art space and free communal space for people to come together and enjoy cannabis together, to get education about what are edibles and what is vaping, what are dabs, and what is all this stuff that my kids are doing. This is why we're here, not just providing cannabis. So with that, I just, I feel that, you know, taking control of the decision-making that will happen, because as many people have said, the cannabis will be delivered. People don't really, I don't really think that patients even understand or know that there's a difference between ordering in one city and another. All they know is they pull up weedmaps.com, and there are four deliveries actually in Emeryville right now, or claim to be, because you can put your icon anywhere. So having local control, true control, is really making, grabbing it, you know, ahead of time, being preemptive, and having that foresight to really understand that it's coming regardless, and to really work on how you want to enforce it and how you want to capture the benefit from it as well. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrea. And at this time, to continue the presentation, I would like to thank and welcome Elliot Dobris, a public relations expert who I hope can speak a little bit to patient need and any other reflections based on what you've heard tonight.
Hi, my name's Elliot Dobris. And as the mayor said--
Dobris, I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. Everyone gets it wrong. I do public relations for a variety of cannabis organizations, including the California Cannabis Industry Association, the National Cannabis Bar Association, the Apothecarium, which is one of San Francisco's largest dispensaries, and some producers. And in that work, I have a lot of interaction with patients, and I'm a patient myself. So I wanted to bring the patient perspective to you tonight. And I want to start by reading a letter that one of my dispensary clients got recently from a patient. The subject is gratitude. And she writes, "Around December, I came to your dispensary after my husband was again hospitalized. He's battling cancer and has great difficulty swallowing. He's suffering with nausea and pain, and the ER doctor recommended medical marijuana. I came to your dispensary totally ignorant of what product would best serve my husband. Your staff has been absolutely wonderful, advising me what might be best suited for him. After he took one marijuana blueberry, he felt great. I want to thank your caring staff, and I'm grateful for the services you provide." So I want to look at that letter and take it apart a little bit. Increasingly, we see mainstream doctors recommending marijuana to their patients, not just the pot docs who are advertising in the back page of weekly newspapers. A CBS survey of physicians found that nationally, 76% of doctors see medical value in marijuana. But there's a real gap in their knowledge and understanding of how marijuana works. Most of them, and I'm guessing it was true for this patient who wrote in, they know that their patients can benefit from it, but that's really all they know. Many of them don't even know how to write a recommendation, a legal recommendation, and they certainly don't know how to advise their patients to use it. They weren't taught it in medical school. They don't have drug reps coming to their offices to provide them with education. The best source of that information right now is the patient consultants at a well-run dispensary or a delivery service. I happen to think for first-time patients that in-person consultations are really the best way for them to learn about medication. Every day, people come into dispensaries on the worst day, one of the worst days of their life. They've had, they've just had a diagnosis, they've just started chemotherapy, they are overwhelmed, they need a lot of information, they need a lot of help. And it's not just on that day. They have ongoing needs for consultation and information, learning which products to use, which strains to use, how to access the medication. And I think all those patients really deserve access to those kinds of consultations in their neighborhood. They shouldn't have to rely on leaving the city. They shouldn't have to rely on delivery services. All those things are great options to have, but I think everybody, just as everybody has access to a Walgreens or a CVS in their neighborhood, I think everyone should have access to marijuana, medical marijuana, in their neighborhood. Let's see. It's important to note that marijuana is not a single drug, but it's really a class of drugs. There are tens of active compounds. They all interact with people differently, and those interactions can change as people's health change, as their tolerance to the drug change. So again, the value of having access to both the medicine and the consultations in people's neighborhoods, I think, is really important. That's all I have to say. Happy to answer questions from the patient perspective, if anyone has anything.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, my recommendation on this item is to direct staff to prepare changes to current municipal code allowing medical marijuana businesses in Emeryville. Direct staff to seek opportunities for dispensary and auxiliary businesses to locate in Emeryville and evaluate projected revenues from such activity. Is there any member of the public who'd wish to speak on this item? Yes, please.
Hello again. I'm Steel Sue Taylor. And one thing I forgot to mention, I'm also certified by the State of California to teach the medical cannabis program to nurses, administrators of healthcare facilities. There's only one other person in the United States that does that, and I'm one of them. And I guess I'm here today for, just to encourage all of you. There's no hidden agenda with me. It's just to encourage you for what I've seen. I've never smoked cannabis. I'm a former Catholic school principal. I'm also a metaphysical minister. And I saw cannabis. I don't use the word marijuana. I don't use the word weed or pot, because I keep it cannabis in the form that it originated in, spirituality and healing, because that's what I've found. I've been in this industry for seven years. It's been a long haul. How I got here, I'm surprised myself, but I can't turn my back on it. And you listen to me, and you listen to me well. I can't turn my back on it because the healing I've seen. I've seen it heal cancers, tumors. I've seen them shrunk. These are people that I've worked with over and over again. I've seen people leave wheelchairs. I've seen their quality of life improve. And what most people don't know, you don't even have, they don't, most people don't even want to get high. They want to get well. With the CBD strands now, the high is taken out. You know, it has to have some THC, but they work synergistically. But most of the things now you could get, especially for seniors, the rubs, the tinctures, you don't even have to smoke it. So I just want to tell you, if you haven't visited a reputable dispensary, visit one. You can contact me, I can get you in Harborside. Okay? But learn about it. I was fearful of it. I thought it was a drug like crack. But I've learned. I've done the research. I've worked with people, and I can't turn my back on it, because I'm going to make a difference in this world to improve people's lives, because the pharmaceutical approach to healthcare is the real drug and a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, I have one thing. When you're asked, when you're providing direction to staff, it would be useful for me, I always like to think of things comparatively. So whatever, if I have some materials that tell me what Berkeley does and what Oakland does in terms of their regulations, just so I can see what's happening in the surrounding areas, that would be another useful data point for me.
Okay, so would you like staff to come, would it be preferable to you for staff to come back with a study session?
That would be fine. That would be one way to do it, but I do want to have an understanding of how this is working in our very close kind of neighboring municipalities. I wonder, I want to understand what local control looks like around us.
Okay.
I have some comments about this whole subject. I was sitting here in 2006, so there were only two of us here who were. And at that point, I said publicly, and, you know, granted, it's 10 years, it's later, it's a really different ballgame now, but it was my opinion, and it's still my opinion, that any Emeryville resident who needs medical marijuana can get it pretty easily, except that I learned tonight that the delivery prohibition actually, I think, is something that should be lifted, because you might not be able to get yourself to a dispensary. So the first change that I, and that I would want to see, and I don't know, maybe it's the only change I want to see, is just to allow delivery in town, because I think there are enough dispensaries around. I'm not sure we need to have another one. So that's just my, one council member's take on that. I think we should allow delivery for the people who are too impaired to be able to get to a dispensary.
Councilmember Davis, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I do. The world has changed since 2006, and I think we really have to move ahead to get a structure in place in Emeryville to make sure that, number one, medical marijuana is available. And I agree with Ruth about the delivery. We want, we want a comprehensive package here that will come back to us in a timely fashion. And when I say timely, I'm really talking March or April. I don't know whether that's possible or not, but we've seen what other cities have done, and I appreciate what you say, Jack. Let us learn by other people's successes and also by their failures. The one thing that we really have to be careful of, we're, we have become a very dense city. So we want to make sure in how we configure our rules that we do not allow any kind of intrusiveness or damage to our residents or our businesses. That can be done, there's no doubt in my mind. The burden now will be on the staff's backs to bring us forward a workable document. But I fully support it.
I have one other comment, which is I want to see the, our second-hand smoke ordinance address the smoke from smoking marijuana, because people could complain of contact highs and other things. So, and especially since we're a town of mostly condominium living, air ducts are going to be shared, and it's not like people have the privacy of their own home. They have to accommodate their neighbors, and they're impacted by their neighbors because it can, smoke can go through walls and ducts and that kind of thing. So part of the package, I think, really needs to be addressed in our second-hand smoke ordinance as well. You know, I will just say, you know, there's, sometimes I walk down streets of Oakland, I can get a contact high, and, you know, it's like, I'm not that happy about that.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yeah, that's a legitimate concern, Ruth.
Yeah, that's a legitimate concern, Ruth. You know, I'm just, the, I'm just curious about, we're one city among 100-plus Bay Area cities. And all cities seem to be racing to the same line. And, you know, it's, it's a good thing for us to not have a race to the bottom. You know, we don't have to be the lowest tax rate. We don't have to, you know, I think we can be a normal city and not try to become, you know, just so reasonably priced that we have high volume. We can be a normal city. That's all I, my feeling about it.
Mayor, the other thing, of course, is we probably should, should take a look at the ordinance that we configure. And we should ask the staff whether indeed they can bring this back to us in March or April.
Well...
Michael?
It depends. So I think what I'm hearing from council is there is some interest in seeing what neighboring jurisdictions are doing in terms of their regulation. So there's some information that council would like back. I'm also hearing from council that the issues to look at include delivery and how we're going to handle delivery, as well as how to handle secondhand smoke. So I think that before staff can bring back a proposal to you, what I would like to do is to give you back some of that information that you're asking for, namely, how are other cities in the surrounding areas regulating it? And perhaps give you a menu then, or give you an idea of what your options are as to regulation, as to cultivation, distribution, delivery, how they handle issues like secondhand smoke, how they handle taxation and regulation and licensing. Because that will then inform, you know, the more specificity and the more input I get from the council, the easier it will be for staff to then draft an ordinance that is reflective of what the council's desires and goals are.
Michael, can you come back with that informational packet in February or March?
I'm going to shoot for March. And if I can get that to you, if you're giving, if you're asking for March, I will take March. And if I can get that to you sooner, I certainly will endeavor to do that. I'm hearing from the council that this is a priority.
Absolutely.
And I understand that. I want to be able to give you the information that you're asking to.
And Michael, if I will take March, if you will also include information regarding San Leandro's process of permitting, because they are the latest and greatest city in our region to do that. And they went through a lengthy process. And I think it's worth considering what they went through to figure out what was the best for their city.
That would be great. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here necessarily. And so if there are other models out there that the city council would like to follow, then that's very helpful in us getting the process, getting pushed through that much faster. So I'm hearing a study session in March.
We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but let's improve on the wheel.
And perhaps it goes without saying, Charlie, I would love to have some considerations for land use included in this staff report. I think we've already discussed what could potentially be areas of sensitivity and what might not be in terms of where a dispensary might be located if that were to happen. So you have your direction?
I have direction, thank you.
Very good. And I want to thank everyone who spoke for this item. Thank you very, very much. So that was item 8.1.3. We're moving on.
Move to read by title only on the skateboard park.
Do we have a second?
I, I want to talk about the skateboard park.
Okay.
Well, we can read by title only and then have a discussion.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
City attorney?
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Emeryville amending section 5-38.2 sub A and B of the Emeryville Municipal Code, skateboard facilities, sequel determination exempt pursuant to sections 15061 sub B 3 and 15378B 2 of the California Sequel Guidelines.
All right. Do you have any, excuse me, is there a presentation on this?
We have a short staff report, and Andrea will be presenting that.
Thank you, Andrea.
I can skip right to the slide with the ordinance if you'd like.
Hopefully a brief staff report.
It is a very brief one. Okay, well, so you all know the subject already of this item, so skip right ahead. The current status is with the skate park is that all bicycles are prohibited in the skate park. And the issue with that is that there is a bike and pedestrian path that actually goes through the skate park. So the unintended consequence of the current ordinance is that bicycles would not be able to use the bicycle path to go through the skate park. So the purpose of tonight's proposed amendments are intended to clarify that bicycles cannot use the skate park features, so the ramps, but they can continue to use the path through the skate park. The proposed modifications also clarify the prohibited and permitted uses and authorize the community services director to promulgate rules consistent with such prohibited and permitted uses. And the reason for this authority delegation is so that if uses crop up that are potentially going to damage the skate park features, the community services director can issue a rule right away without having to come back to council. Likewise, if there are uses that the, that, for example, in-lane skaters, if they want to use it, that's something that would be allowed, the community services director can allow that. So it gives staff a little bit more flexibility to respond to the actual use of the park. So that's the purpose of tonight's proposed amendment. And then here is the redline version of the ordinance, just in case it would facilitate any discussion. And I can put it up on the overhead if that might be larger. Or if that's good for council, then I can just leave it as it is.
It's fine on the screen.
Okay. And that is it on my presentation tonight. Are there any questions?
I have, well, a comment and then perhaps a question. I'm glad to see that the community services director, in this case Pedro, will have the authority to work out the rules for the park. But one of the things that I, and I've mentioned this before, that I want to see both from community services and also from our police department is something that we do when it comes to bicycles. And that is that our city, rather than just coming at this from a punitive way, that we're also very supportive and taking a role in terms of education and safety. So having helmets, having pads, having programming that supports the safe use of the facility is something that's really important to me. Because I'm troubled by the confiscation of people's property, especially the confiscation of skateboards. I don't know what the process is for taking someone's property and what it is, what it requires to get it back. But I hope that while we may have this as kind of a backstop for bad behavior, that in practice, what we're doing with this new facility that many people are very excited about is that we're encouraging people to use it safely. So that's just my comment on the ordinance and my hope for the police department and community services.
I have an opinion about that.
Before we really get into discussion, I just want to ask if there are any more clarifying questions and give the opportunity to the public to speak. Seeing no public coming forward to speak, go ahead, Scott.
It just, having employees in the past who were really good skaters and having seen a lot of skating happening in my neighborhood, that if you could meet with some good skaters before the park opens and just get their perspective on likely issues, like when a board flies away and goes into some of the cars in the parking lot, where is that likely place? And maybe a small fence could be put there. And, you know, where is a likely board traveling and hitting somebody who's just using the path? You know, things, I just think some good skaters could really inform the use of the park before it's actually used.
If I could comment on that, we had a series of workshops with some very experienced skaters, the ones that built the skate spot underneath the freeway. We have a very, very top-notch architect that worked with the skaters, and they built the facility that they want. With respect to the boards flying out into the cars, we actually had the city council approve some, an art feature that is a skateable, excuse me, a barrier that's actually permeable in a way, so you can walk through it. But there's a series of poles that are aligned in such a way that's supposed to prevent the board from flying out and hitting the cars in the locations where we think that could happen. So we've addressed a lot of that, and we've worked with the community. And we got the buy-in of all the skaters.
Move the first reading of the ordinance.
One more question. When does it open? When is it opening?
We were hoping the middle of February, but with all the range, it's really put a little bit of a delay. They were actually working today, trying to continue to keep that pace. But they feel that they're going to have their work done by the end of this month. And then we have to do a walkthrough and make sure everything is taken care of. But, you know, we'll probably have a soft opening when we're ready to do that. And then we'll have a celebration with a ribbon cutting.
Okay, thank you, Maurice.
Yes.
So we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion.
Motion, a second. Do we need to call the roll, or can we?
If I could get a roll called, that'd be great, please, thank you.
Councilmember Rasher?
Aye.
Councilmember Radkin?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Moving us to item 8.3.
Move to appoint Alexandria and Brandy.
Okay, and that's to clarify, Alexandria LaRoche is a business representative, and Brandy Grant is a resident member to the Economic Development Advisory Committee in amending the calendar.
I have a question about Brandy's application. I understand it was a year old and don't know whether she was even contacted.
Actually, she was contacted.
And then I didn't see a statement of interest about why she wants to serve. That was missing. So I don't know anything about her and don't know why she submitted the application for this particular committee. So it just, there was just a lot of gaps in the application.
Well, on the...
I know Brandy, and she's a young woman and a young professional. Has lived over on 62nd Street for 25 years, something like that. And that's why I would support, support her appointment.
If I could, if I could just add, on the online application, unfortunately, that's actually one of the fields that's not marked as an acquired field. So staff has recognized that, so we will make a change to ensure that it's marked as a required field in the future.
What kind, what kind of background does she have around economic development?
That I don't know too much about her background. I'm sorry.
Are there any other clarifying questions for staff? I'd like to give the public an opportunity to speak on this item if they choose. Seeing none. So I have one motion. Ruth, would you like to make a substitute motion?
No, but it's just, you know, this is really weak. It's embarrassing to approve something like this.
I initially was struck by the same thing, Ruth. I felt that the application was really thin. And my, since I was out of town and didn't have a chance to try and make contact with her after I got the packet, I was hoping to rely on fellow council members. If Nora knows her, I think one of the ways that, you know, people sign up for committees for very different reasons and with differing kind of levels of ability, we, we need people on the committee. And if she's willing to, you know, if she self-selects and wants to devote her time to it, my inclination is to give her that, that opportunity.
Well, we're trying to encourage residents and businesspeople to staff these committees. And the fact that she stepped forward says to me, at least we have some burgeoning interest here. She may be, and they may not be a star in economic development, but we all have to start someplace.
Yeah.
And I do appreciate also, Tom, the maybe making that, if staff is going to make that a required section of the application, I think that will help. But it's enough for me to know that Nora is acquainted with her and to, you know, I also see a need to get more participation on that committee.
Bill, you're the chair of that committee. What do you have to say?
I would have liked to have known about the possibility. Not that I would have veto power or anything of that sort, but anyone who's serving on the committee would like to know who might be joining the ranks of the committee as soon as possible. As good a background information as we can possibly get for such folks interested in serving. Endorsement by city council members is always a good idea. If Nora knows something about this person, that helps a lot. But let's try to be orderly. Let's try to get information to the committees as quickly as possible. Let's make sure we know what we're dealing with. I'll certainly ask these, these new people to introduce themselves and say something about themselves the first time I see them in a meeting. Those are my only comments.
Thank you, Bill.
I have a question. When folks are submitting their applications, are they told when the item will come before council and that maybe they should attend? Or are they given, let's say, like Bill just mentioned, the list of the chair and vice chair and the phone number so that maybe they could contact if they wanted to some people on the committee? I'm wondering what the process looks like from their side? If it's just they interact with a form and then there's kind of silence until they hear back? Or what is the follow-up process for that?
Well, our department does, in the notice that was sent out and published on the website, as well as our public posting areas, our three billboards across town, it did give the specifics of the committee, as well as the date of the meeting that the item would be addressed at. So notification was there that this was going to definitely be on a January 19 meeting. And I, in fact, did contact them personally to notify them.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, so we had a motion. Did we have a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Do we need to call the roll?
Councilmember Rasher?
Aye.
Councilmember Radkin?
Okay.
Councilmember Davis?
That was an aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to item 8.5, request for approval of out-of-state travel by...
No, no, 8.4.
Sorry. Wanted it to be 8.5. Item 8.4.
Move approval of the Public Works Committee recommendation.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. I would love to give Maurice a moment to introduce this item.
Two sentences.
Aye.
Two sentences.
Aye.
Would you like me to...
Please.
Okay, sure.
For the public.
So, sure, for the public. So back in 2002, the city striped a bike lane on 65th Street. And at that time, we had a request from the recently completed Oliver Loff's project to keep the diagonal parking. to keep the diagonal parking in front of their development. And at that time, the city council, with their understanding that there wasn't as much bicycle traffic in that area at that time, they approved the, keeping the diagonal parking. As you know, the recent street rehab project we just completed, repaved that area, and instead of just restoring the diagonal parking, we thought it would be a good idea to revisit that situation and bring it to your attention and get direction as to whether or not you want to keep the angle parking where they were or whether or not you could keep the new striping we've just put in. So with that, I'll leave it to you.
Okay, any clarifying questions? Is there any member of the public who would wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. Please call the roll.
Councilman Rasher.
Aye.
Councilman Radkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Mayor Martinez.
Aye.
Now we are at item 8.5, request for approval of out-of-state travel by the mayor.
Will of approval.
Second.
Yeah. Right. I just have a comment, though, because the staff report wanted to know about the mayor's conference line item, and that's for the Alameda County mayor's conference expenses. So that's my understanding. But the city council as a whole, at least, used to have a pot of money to allow us to go to conferences and things like that, but that was separate from the Alameda County mayor's conference line item.
Right.
Appreciate that.
Yes. Councilmembers, I did check into this just before the meeting to make sure, anticipating that this question would be asked. And we do have a line item that is appropriate for this use, and it has $4,000 in it. Apparently, something had been charged against that line item that needs to be moved into the proper line item and corrected. And again, it will be restored to the full $4,000. And I think probably we could do a little better job in structuring, delineating these line items within the budget in this coming year. But we definitely do have $4,000, and I understand that the total cost adds up to be, for this particular conference, under $3,000. So we are in good shape, and it is true that we will not be hosting in the city of Emeryville the mayor's conference until after this fiscal year.
So there you go.
Okay. Okay, Diane.
Would the public like to comment on this item?
Go forth and have fun.
All right. Okay.
Do you mean to vote?
Seeing none, yes, if there's no further discussion, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Rasher.
Aye.
Councilmember Radkin.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Donahue.
Aye.
Mayor Martinez.
Aye, and thank you. I will be reporting back at our next meeting.
Good.
I'm waking up at 4:00 AM tomorrow to take off. I just found out, sorry, now I'm making the comment. I just found out that this was even an opportunity last Wednesday at the first mayor's conference that I attended, when several mayors encouraged me to go. And I didn't realize it was a possibility until that night, and Carolyn can attest to my surprise and satisfaction. And staff, I have to thank staff for making this happen so quickly.
Fine, you're representing the smallest city there. People usually there 50,000, the population of 50,000 or more.
I will be wearing my Emeryville pin. I dug it out today.
There you go.
And again, thank you. So moving on to item nine, there are no items under City Housing Successor. Item 10, Communications and Reports, 10.1, Department Heads.
Nobody.
Not tonight? 10.2, Council Members?
Yes. I want to raise a potential policy item for us to discuss. You know, this council's been passionate about housing in various permutations, and it was a while ago, I think I was away or sick or something, but the question, I wanted to see whether we were interested in pursuing regulating Airbnb and VRBO and those kinds of things. And given the fact that I think there's a slipping trend where we are becoming a community of transients that are enabled by the short-term transitional housing that Airbnb provides, that we're losing, first of all, potential TOT, but also other kinds of issues around that. And so while medical marijuana dispensaries and us entering the drug arena may have jumped to the head of the queue, I want to just caution, which is, I think, that issues around permanent housing, transitional housing, regulating these kinds of industries actually, I think, pose a far bigger public policy issue that we need to take action on. And so I don't want to see that. I know that's in legal departments, you know, kind of like, it's on the to-do list, but it's very hard when council says, oh, let's work on this. This is like super important. And then, well, that gets, other things that are super important get dropped later on. So if we want to do the issue that we talked about at length tonight sooner than Airbnb, I personally just have an issue with that, because to me, that's a far greater threat to the stability of the community and a whole bunch of other issues. So can I get some kind of a sense of when some regulations around Airbnb, VRBO, that kind of stuff, might come to us?
Mayor Martinez?
Yes.
My staff is conducting a study of the issue right now, and we anticipate bringing a study session to the Planning Commission and to you, because it will involve an amendment to the planning regulations in the coming months. Probably, I don't know exactly when.
Could that be in March as well?
March to the Planning Commission, possibly.
Okay.
And then it would be-
I just feel like time is slipping away around this particular issue.
Ruth, you going to bring that up again on Saturday at our goal-setting?
Yeah, when that's, yeah. So I just wanted to, you know, not to get into a whole discussion of it, but it's just when things feel like they jump to the head of the queue, what are we actually, what's dropping back? And I'm just concerned about that.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify, it was probably two months ago that staff together had a very comprehensive discussion put on by community development staff that thoroughly laid out the various potential regulatory areas. We had a very thorough discussion, Q and A, including the city attorney and myself on this subject. And there is a great deal to these regulations and many choices, but this was something that Councilwoman Davis had brought up a few months ago, and so we did get on that. But so that you know, we had a discussion about where we go from here, and community development staff has continued to work on this issue.
I'm glad it's being worked on. I'll look forward to seeing it sooner rather than later.
Mayor, I just have one thing I want to say. I want to reemphasize how important a plan of action on 1270 64th Street is. That has been a blight on that street. For too long, we've dropped the ball on this. We've got to do something about that. So I just want to reemphasize it. You know, we've had a lot of changes this year, and perhaps maybe something fell through the cracks, but these people on 64th Street are suffering from the deterioration in that house. We need to do something, and we need to do it timely.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to hear a couple of things if some of the department heads and reps wanted to speak to some issues. So the first thing is with the heavy rains, I've noticed some flooding. I was wondering what kind of clearing of drains or kinds of actions Public Works had to take.
Sure. As you know, this time of year, we've had a lot of leaves off the trees, and so a lot of our experts have been clearing the storm drain inlets from the leaves that cover the inlets. Most of the leaves have come off to date, so we're seeing less of the leaves. And so, but today in the rain, I noticed quite a bit of flooding at the corner at 43rd and San Pablo, right in front of the rec center. So I've got to talk to the crew to see what it is they're finding over there. We might need to get in there and clean the storm drain on San Pablo. It's Caltrans storm drain, but maybe we can get in there and clean that out. I also saw flooding near 48th Street, so I know the crew's putting time into that area. But I didn't see any major flooding like storm drain capacity, kind of flooding like we used to have on Overland Avenue or down at the foot of Park Avenue. Lake Powell, we're still working there to try to get that project moving, but we have a solution for now, which is a pump that we set up every summer, I mean, every winter.
So what about the pothole that keeps reappearing after a heavy rain by the old Doug's Barbecue? That's, I mean, that's a real axle breaker.
Right. We have been talking to Caltrans about that one whenever it does come up, so I don't know if it's there right now, but I know where we're-
Yeah, it is.
It is there. We'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah. And then I was just wondering about the MLK Day protests and if Dante wanted to say anything about, anything noteworthy about yesterday's activities.
Yes, so we had met with Oakland, and the people met at Frank Agalapaza. There was about 600 to 700 people there. And we knew where they were going to march. We had a pretty good background on they were going to come up Adeline and then cross over west at 34th Street and go by Home Depot. So Oakland, working well with Oakland, Oakland, they had two motor units, two vans of officers, and two teams on their bicycles. So they followed them in and helped facilitate the march. They stayed with them. We had our own protocol and what we were going to do with our plan. We were protecting our assets. We knew we had to protect the East Bay Bridge Center, Home Depot. We had a feeling they were going to go over there. They did march through East Bay Bridge. We had warned Home Depot to close their doors. They didn't get all of them down in time, so one of them was damaged slightly, but we still made it okay over there. They crossed over the 40th Street Bridge and down Shell Mount, north on Shell Mount, and then back into Bay Street. No damage. We protect all our assets to Bay Street. They circled back around and set up on Brunswick, and set up a, they had a truck with them. At this time, they probably had four to five to 600 people, we're guessing, and they got their speeches in and everything like that. We don't think that that contingency had anything to do with what happened on the Bay Bridge. We got some help from CHP, and CHP blocked off the Powell Street on ramp or off ramp and helped the congestion at Powell and Christie. So all in all, I think just, you know, Home Depot might not feel that way, but one bent door out of six or 700 people, we ended up okay.
No injuries?
No injuries.
No arrests?
No arrests, no injuries, and just a pretty big overtime bill, but it is the nature of the beast nowadays.
And about, how many, how long did this take place? From the time they came into Emeryville to the time they dispersed?
From the time, right, so probably crossing over into Emeryville, I would probably say two hours, about two hours. We didn't anticipate them staying and protesting for, and their speeches, we didn't anticipate it lasting that long, but it did, and they weren't disorderly. So we continued to monitor it, continued to monitor some of the splinter groups, but there wasn't very many of those. Again, no damage, no reported damage, so.
Very well done. Well done.
Councilmembers reporting on meetings attended. No mosquito report. Community advisory body vacancies, there's nothing on the agenda, but I do want to highlight that AC Transit's Accessibility Advisory Committee has a notice for applications that are due on February 1st. So I will leave this application with the city manager's office if you would hold it for any member of the public who is interested in being on the Accessibility Advisory Committee. And I think that's very important work that's happening on that committee. With no other comments, this meeting is adjourned.